I'd like to welcome everyone to this extraordinary circumstances workshop this Thursday, June the 20th, 2024. With that, I'll call this workshop to order. Madam Clerk, could you please call the room?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Urban?
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Here.
Madam Clerk, would you mind reading this item into the record today?
Review of Osceola County and City of St. Cloud Joint Mobility Fee Renewal Study and Demonstrated Need Study for the purpose of demonstrating whether extraordinary circumstances necessitate an increase in the mobility fee beyond the phase-in limitations established in Florida Statute 163.31801 subsection 6.
Good afternoon. My name is Tammy Recky. I'm the Principal Planner in Community Development. And today we'll be talking about our joint mobility fee study with Osceola County and our demonstrated need study. We'll go over a little bit of background on mobility fees in the city, talk about some of the study key points, what the proposed mobility fees are, what are the options for city council consideration, and our next steps. For background, in 2016, the city transitioned from transportation impact fees to mobility fees in order to be able to cover transportation network costs in a better way to fund roadway, transit, bicycle, and pedestrian facilities. The study also reflected the changes of cost, credit, and demand components, and provided impact fee discounts for targeted land uses. After that study, the city adopted, in 2017, a three-phase implementation plan in order to establish those mobility fees. So in 2018, the Phase 1 implementation happened, and then the following years, we had Phase 2, and then finally, Phase 3 of the implementation ended with 100% of the full calculated mobility fee rate for the residential development and 70% of the full calculated rate for non-residential. And that's where our fees come from, from that study. So last year, the City of St. Cloud and Osceola County got together to initiate a joint mobility fee renewal study and demonstrated need study to make sure that our, the mobility fees between the county and the city are consistent so we can improve our efforts of working together to provide a safe and reliable transportation network system. And from that study that initiated last year, now in 2024, we are proposing this joint mobility fee renewal along with our demonstrated need study for adoption. So a little bit of background on statutes. When we increase impact fees, they must be done in increments or installments, depending on how much the fees are increasing, because the mobility fees that we are proposing, they exceed, they exceed the phase-in limitations provided. We conducted extraordinary circumstances study, or we are presenting extraordinary circumstances supported by a demonstrated need study of why we should implement the fees without following the phase-in limitations. So we have two publicly noticed workshops. Today, June 20th, is the second workshop that the city is hosting, dedicated to the extraordinary circumstances. And we'll now pass the time to, to our consultant. We have Max Sheets today from HTMB. He'll go over how the study was conducted and how it was structured.
Thank you, Tammy. As mentioned, there are four key elements used to demonstrate need. Let's take a look at each element and how they apply. The data collected as part of this study shows an increasing demand of transportation infrastructure. Osceola County is expected to see a population as high as 827,000 by 2045, while the City of St. Cloud was ranked the 12th fastest-growing city in the state in 2023. It saw the ninth-largest percent change in population for Florida cities between 2010 and 2020. The city's population grew 67.59%. The City of St. Cloud and Osceola County's rapid growth provides context as to why the new phase-in limitations that apply statewide under the Florida Impact Fee Act may present additional challenges to the city and the county with respect to funding the needed transportation infrastructure improvements. The next key point related to need revolves around the transportation network metrics. Transportation network metrics show the efficiency, performance, and overall health of the county's, city's transportation systems. The top graph provides data from FDOT's Data and Analytics Office and shows a nearly 30% increase in travel across the county's transportation network between 2011 and 2022, while Florida only saw an 18.7% increase in daily vehicle miles traveled during the same period. The graph at the bottom of the slide shows the county saw a 13.75% increase in roadway congestion during this 11-year period. The current capacity improvements are not keeping up with the increase in travel demand leading to an increase in congestion. While the city did not have daily vehicle miles traveled and the network volume to capacity data available, there's reasonable justification to apply these trends from the county to the city. The third element necessary to demonstrate need is an increase in transportation costs. Unfortunately, current mobility fees are not adequate to address the traffic impact caused by new development due to the increase in construction costs. As seen in this graphic, average construction costs in Florida from FDOT's cost-per-mile-long-range estimating data shows a significant increase in roadway construction costs, nearly a 50% increase between 2021 and 2023. This can be categorized as an extraordinary circumstances that justifies the consideration for adjusting the current mobility fee schedule. It is important to note that these construction costs do not account for the project-specific scope and characteristics such as right-of-way costs, environmental impact mitigation costs, signalization improvement costs, as well as a few other aspects. As for certain projects, the percent increase can be even greater. The final element used to demonstrate need is the justification for mobility fees. From the presented data, it is easy to see how the steep increase in construction improvement costs and network congestion, which are not accounted for in the current mobility fees, can severely impact the ability of the maintaining agency to improve roadway networks. Without the proposed update to the mobility fees, the cost to improve the roadway network brought on by new development will far exceed the funding provided by the revenue for mobility fees. After demonstrating the need for revised mobility fees, an effort was undertaken to calculate these proposed fees. The next set of slides walks through the calculations used to develop proposed mobility fees. Mobility fees are calculated using two equations. The first equation seen here calculates the person miles traveled, or PMT, for each land use. The second equation seen on the next slide utilizes this PMT to calculate the actual mobility fee. The example shown here is for a single-family home. Person miles traveled is derived using multiple variables, which include trip generation values from the most up-to-date IT trip generation manual, percent new trips, which eliminates the pass-by trips, local trip length factors, which were developed from a localized effort from NHTS or the National Household Travel Survey, future trip-length reduction factors, which is derived from an assumed densification of the county, person miles traveled factor, which is developed from the NHTS survey and accounts for outbound and inbound trips. Using all of these variables, the PMT for a land use is carried forward into the mobility fee calculation. This is the second formula that calculates the actual mobility fee using the PMT from the first formula and two additional variables. These variables include a per-mile capacity rate and the per-mile capacity credits. The PMC rate is derived from an average of the per-mile cost of the roadway improvements necessary to meet the future demand. The PMC credits are accounting for the other funding sources used to expand the roadway network. Combined using the formula, the mobility fees are calculated. This slide and the next provide the proposed mobility fees. We'll go into the changes in a couple of slides. These are the remainder of the proposed mobility fees, and then this is where we get into the percent changes. Percent change was derived by taking the 2024 mobility fee minus the 2021 mobility fee, then dividing by the 2021 mobility fees. A few highlights here is single-family homes increasing by 224%, new-town homes increasing by 146%, and there are several new categories which were added, which include campground, public and private schools, universities, and affordable housing. A few categories are seeing a decrease such as health and fitness club, place of worship, and daycare. Continuing through to the remaining land uses, here are some additional highlights. Warehouse manufacturing and industrial decreased by 45%. Mini warehouse decreased by 44%. As with the previous slides, some additional categories were added for clarity and differentiation based on how much vehicular traffic they generate, such as high cube transload and short-term storage warehouses, high cube fulfillment center warehouses, pharmacy drugstore without drive-through, food and drink service without drive-through, and cemetery. Now I'll hand the presentation back off to Tammy with the City of St. Cloud to get into the next steps in adopting the new mobility fees.
Thank you, Max. So for options for your city council consideration, we have adopt the new mobility fees as proposed, adopt the new mobility fees less than proposed, phase-in the new mobility fees, or keep our mobility fees at the current levels. And as far as next steps, we had our first public workshop last week on June 13th. Today is our second public workshop, and we are planning to bring this ordinance to the city council on August 8. And after, or if the new mobility fees are approved, they will be effective 90 days from advertisement. Thank you.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to these proposed mobility fees? Please go forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. Logan Opsol, 215 North Osceola Drive. Excuse me. Good to be with the council in daylight hours. I represent an active developer here in the city. We have reached site development plan approval in May, May 9th, to be precise. And one note on the ordinance that's being considered by the council is, is the active approvals in place for the city. Limited pool of applicants that have, for example, as discussed, site development plan approval, looking to move on to building permits. Want to give a big thank you to your staff who's been very communicative and helpful and kind of guiding us through this process and what it would look like. It's been conveyed to us that, of course, impact fees are assessed at building permit application, and that in light of these new impact fees, that the date of the application prior to an effective date, the previous rates would be honored. So what we thought would be prudent is coming for the council for your consideration about any tweaks that might need to happen to the ordinance. Again, this is a limited pool of applicants. I know for certain, there's one. My client, this is the Progress Lane Apartments, that have been approved. Again, we have site development plan approval, which opens the door to, to building permit. But tweaking some language to allow some clarity for those folks that they can be maintaining the previous rates. I have some proposed language I'll read in the remaining of my time. I know Dan may have some thoughts about it, but I want to provide this to you for your considerations that we're capturing, you know, all the details as it's being considered for, for final approval. Just some proposed language here. Notwithstanding anything contained herein or within the land development code to the contrary, all building permit applications dated prior to the effective date of this ordinance shall be subject to the impact in mobility fee rates in effect prior to the effective date, including any extensions to the building permit. So again, I gave you some operative dates. We have a site development plan approval on May 9th. I believe the code allows us a year to pull those permits, and a year thereafter to build. I know that we have the 365-day limit. Given what's been conveyed to you in relation to these impact fee and the construction costs increase, as ambitious as we want to move to break ground, we have very real considerations of costs and supply. We want to make sure we fit into those timeframes that the code affords in relation to the new impact fees. I think I just brought it in under three minutes. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Dan, do you have any comment on what he has certainly proposed in regard to?
Well, historically, the city, historically, the city has set, whenever there's been a change in impact fees or mobility fees, the operative date for the application of the new rate would be the date of the building permit application. So that's been historically how it's been handled. We haven't really discussed that with the city council, but we didn't feel like there was any reason why that would change moving forward. That's the way it's been done. So any project that is in the quote-unquote pipeline and is ready to pull, to submit a sufficient application for a building permit would, would be able to have their building permit, their, their mobility fees calculated as of that date. So in reality, where, where you are right now is unless the council wants to do anything else, the proposal is, as was mentioned, it's not likely this is, this ordinance would be adopted until August. There's a 90-day statutory requirement on the effective date. So as we sit here today, you're looking at now, between now and somewhere around close to the end of the year before, for individual projects to get their building application, building permit applications, and to lock in at the existing rate. Of course, the council can adjust that any way the council wants to.
Well, I certainly feel like the way we've done it in the past certainly is applicable to the future. I think it's only fair if people have their applications already submitted. It was based on what those current fees were, and so I certainly think that ought to continue if there is a change. I think we had, Steinbrenner? Is that you? How are you today? Just state your name and address for the record.
Lee Steinhauer, 1953 Clayton Heritage Way, Maitland, Florida. Here on behalf of the Greater Orlando Builders Association. As stated last, last week when we had the first workshop, we have a mobility fee consultant who's doing a peer review study. The work is ongoing. I talked to them today. They expect to have something in the next couple of weeks, and so they're, they're digging into it. So we'll make sure to get what we have from them to you as quickly as possible regarding the study. So I just wanted to let you know that we are working as quickly as possible on our end. One thing that was brought up to me today by, by the consultant was, my understanding is that there is a law that, or bill, I should say, that is in the governor's hands now. I think it's, I want to say 479, but don't quote me on the number, that relates to mobility fees. I'm not sure what effect it has on the study or how mobility fees are conducted, but it was brought to my attention that that bill obviously is on the governor's desks. Obviously, he may not sign it, but I would assume that he probably will sign it. And I don't know what effect it, it will or will not have on, on mobility fees or on the study, but wanted to bring that to your attention because it was brought to my attention this afternoon. And so, again, I don't know what effect it will have or not, but just wanted to let you know, we're working as hard as we can on our end to get something to you, and appreciate, appreciate your time and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. We hope that you'll get that to us right away then. All right. Would anyone else like to speak to the council? If not, we'll have discussion by our council at this time. Mr. Urban, Councilman Urban?
Thank you. So I understand this is a public workshop for the public to give their input, but I just wanted to communicate to the council a little bit about what I've been discussing with staff, since this is our only time that we can talk about these things. Of course, these numbers are staggering, but our growth in Osceola County is staggering, and I think it's certainly extraordinary circumstances that we're seeing in this county and in the City of St. Cloud. One of the most concerning parts of this to me is the increase in the commercial mobility fees. Our city so desperately needs commercial, we should be rolling out the red carpet for that. And so that's one thing that I'm keeping an eye on, that I really want to see changed in this, is that, you know, you look at the, the increase in grocery stores. If we had a grocery store or Publix on every corner, that cuts down on the trips that you're seeing on the roads and everything. So we want to be encouraging grocery stores, restaurants, drive-through shops, things like that in a town that's so, so residential-heavy. So that's just a big concern of mine and something that, that I'll be keeping an eye on moving forward.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I'll say a couple, the same things I said last time, right? You know, I mean, the price of construction astronomically increased like 46%, and when you look at the, the plan for the roads in the, in this area, if we keep the mobility fees as is, we'll be a half a billion dollars short. So where's that money coming from? You know, I mean, are we going to raise taxes? I mean, what are we going to do to try to cover that, that shortfall? And I wanted to ask a question to, and I had talked with Mr. Tomek when I was going through my agenda review last, last time, about tools in the toolbox. And I was having the same conversation about commercial and industrial and, you know, doing something or providing some tools to the city manager. It's like, if those developments are coming in, is there some, you know, tools in the toolbox she can use to targeted industries, you know, whatever? And I don't know, I know they were working on it. I don't know if he came up with anything that he could share with us.
Still working on it.
So I had talked to him about that as well, because, you know, previously, when we adopted our mobility fees, we had, had discounted that so that we were trying, like you said, rolling out the red carpet. And so I wanted to make sure we had some options in there to do the same thing moving forward. But I'm glad to hear some conversation, because we didn't really talk about it at the last ones. I'd love to hear kind of what everybody's thinking. But that's it for me.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Thank you, Mayor. I have the, the same concerns that Councilmember Urban had mentioned regarding the, the commercial growth. We definitely are residential-heavy and do need to be able to incentivize commercial development or commercial tax base here in the city. And we did discuss at the, the last workshop or one of the workshops regarding a menu of options for commercial incentives or incentives, you know, if we see a project that we like, we can, we can, we can offer so that we can attract those folks. Those are really all of my comments. I'd like to see that, that menu of options prior to the, to the adoption of it, the final adoption of it. If we could, could work on that, that would be great. So those are my comments.
Ditto. Well, you know, I hate taxes, but that's how we, we have to have those to pay for things. I certainly hate increases that impact families, but that's where the biggest, most significant impact that we have coming. I hope that we have some kind of provisions that if there are applications or proposals for affordable housing, that there are some tools that, you know, we could use in, in that regard. I certainly agree. I don't think we have a choice. We've always talked about growth paying for itself. Even with this increase, it's still not going to pay for all of the, the demands and the costs that especially roads cost us. I think probably out of all the things that we do, roads are probably one of the most expensive things that we do, and the cost has just been exponential along with the growth. So I, as much as I hate taxing people, I don't think we have a choice. Personally, I think this is something we certainly have to, have to support. I agree. I would like to see some tools, something written into the statutes that give us either the staff or the council the ability to make decisions that would encourage and help promote commercial growth, because I think there's some things right around the corner that we're going to really need and be a huge benefit to the city. Do we have any other comment?
One more, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
With this large increase, I'd like to set up some kind of system that we don't, that we can increase incrementally versus a big increase. And when's the last time we've increased our impact fees? It's maybe five or seven years?
It was on that first slide. I believe it was seven years ago? Was that what the right answer?
Yeah, I thought it was seven, and I apologize, but.
But didn't we like?
I would like to see. I'd like to see it happen.
Put that slide back up?
Every other year or something like that, so we can really not be as painful over a period of time.
I understand that. I think the only problem with that is the need is so exponential right now.
Well, did you see 46% in two years?
It's huge.
That's crazy.
It's huge. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I think the problem with that, with drag, you know, extending it out for extended amount of time is we're going to stay in a hole, you know? It's calculated based on now, and then if we take three years to get up to the amount, I think that's the problem. I, you know, I would be for adopting them as is.
I assume the county is, their proposal is for an immediate, not an incremental increase?
I think the county is working on something for the final adoption in August. I know they're looking at, again, affordable housing category, as well as they're working with us for the economic development purposes. So it's actively being worked on right now. I wish I could give you answers, but I can't.
Yeah. Yeah, I would certainly agree. You know, an incremental thing, just by the time that all the increments are passed through in the hole again.
I apologize. In the future, after this is adopted, whenever it's adopted, I would like to see it be incrementally versus every seven years or every 10 years, because we saw a two-year increase, which I haven't seen in my time of building and buying warehouses and houses. I've never seen that large of increase. So I get this point, but I'd like to, for future council in future times, to have incrementally increases versus a seven-year gap.
We'll work on adding that to a calendar and make sure we monitor.
Councilmember Urban?
Just one more comment, and something to keep in mind is, as, as was Mayor, I think, mentioned, this is a tax essentially, and it's a pass-through cost that gets passed through to future home buyers and younger people who are just trying to afford and buy their first home. Not only that, I think we, there's, should be a differentiation between the big national builders who can handle this cost and the, you know, the small-town local builders as well. It's, it's going to have a downstream effect on local businesses, not only the builders, but the plumbers, the electricians, the carpenters, the people who rely on, on this type of work. We have to think about, if this is done all at once, how that's going to hit our local economy and our industry. Maybe think about the implications of that. So just some thoughts moving forward for, for the next workshop as well.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Councilmember Urban, I certainly sympathize and understand exactly what you're, what you're talking about regarding the, the smaller builders and things of that. about regarding the smaller builders and things of that nature. The example that I've had in conversation is if you, you know, you have a family who has a couple acres of land and they want to split them off and have, you know, one son or the other daughter build a house, they're going to be looking at $100,000 before they even put a shovel in the ground. So I'd like to, you know, of course, see something to help offset that as well.
Any other comment? Mr. Benzerra, do you have anything for us?
No, sir.
Ms. Miller?
No, sir.
With that, we will call this council meeting to a close, or this workshop to a close, and we will take a brief break and move on to our next item, which is a CRE agenda.